I'll go ahead and call this meeting to where it's Thursday, June 11th, 2020, the regular called city council meeting. Pastor Josh Martin, you want to come up and give our invocation and prayer?
Thank you. Let's pray together. Heavenly Father, we bow before you and acknowledge your power and your glory. We remember the grace and mercy that you've shown us through Jesus. We ask that you would help us to have grateful hearts for the ways that you blessed us abundantly in our lives. Father, we pray for healing for our community, for our nation with this pandemic. We ask for your protection and safety. We pray for our community leaders here and throughout the nation. You give them wisdom, guidance. Father, we also pray for healing socially and culturally. We pray that you would give us humble hearts to listen to one another and learn from one another. Pray that you would bind up the wounds that run so deep that you would do it for your honor and glory. We do ask especially for this meeting tonight, that you would be with the deliberations, the decisions, every aspect, that you would do it for our good and for your glory. In your name we pray. Amen.
My pleasure.
To the letter of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you Pastor Martin. We have a public forum, we have one person sign and speak. Ms. Kelly?
Yes.
How are you doing today?
I'm good. Good evening. My name is Avis Kelly. I live on Woodland Drive. And my issue is I'm not, I think the thing with us on Woodland Drive is the communication. I spoke with Mr. Bell today about trash. I spoke with Mr. Roger last week about my trash. Like I said, I'm not mad at anybody, but I think if there's issues or whatever we need to do with our trash cans, that it needs to be communicated, like on the can. I didn't get a note on my can. So I think that's one of my issues, that it needs to, we need to have more communication on Woodland Drive. And the other thing that I want to talk about are the trees that when you come down on Woodland Drive, I think it needs to be cleaned up because sometime when you come down, the limbs are hitting your car. Thank you.
Next up is the consent agenda. May 14th, May 28th, and June 5th, council meeting minutes. Is there a motion to approve the consent agenda?
Remove.
Thank you, Mr. Clemmer. Is there a second?
Second.
Thank you, Mr. Barry. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
For the opposed, the ayes have it. Mr. Bell, your report.
Thank you, Mayor. First wanted to have Police Chief Hamilton introduce one of our newest police officers who has recently graduated from the Criminal Justice Academy.
Mayor and Council, I'd introduce you to Officer Eva Cancios. Eva came last summer. She did an internship with us here and when she was attending Greenville Tech. She graduated Greenville Tech in December. She actually was sworn in as a police officer here with us in October of 2019. She completed her training at the Criminal Justice Academy in March of this year. Eva moved here two years after high school from Greece. She actually has dual citizenship. Her mother spent some time here in the United States. She developed an interest in law enforcement. She was about, she said she was about 15 years old. She decided she wanted to be a police officer. And one of the things she found out, she ran into a little issue in Greece is there's a heights requirement. It had to be like five-five, so that was one of the things she ran into an issue with there. So she moved here, had planned she wanted to be a police officer and she's, we're certainly glad to have her here. She's doing a great job. Glad to, she's almost through a field training program and then we'll put her out on her own patrol. So she's doing a great job and we're happy to have her here.
Welcome, welcome.
All right, we'll move on to our census 2020 update. As of June 9th, our, the national self-response rate was 60.8%. South Carolina's self-response rate was 55.6%. Fountain Inn's self-response rate is still above the national and state average at 61.7%. We still trail Simpsonville, Malden, Greer, but we are above Travelers Rest, Greenville City, and Lawrence City. So we are doing pretty well with our census self-response rates. Speaking of census, the census estimates for 2019 were released a few weeks ago. Those estimates had the city of Fountain Inn population of 10,441. That is an increase 4.26% from the 2018 population estimates. That puts Fountain Inn as the ninth fastest growing municipality in South Carolina for 2019. Moving on to our wayfinding signage project, the welcome signs on Highway 418, Fairview Street in South Main have all been installed, as well as the large gateway sign on North Main. We are currently working with an electrician to get all of the lights on those signs working. The foundations for the Trailblazer signs have all been poured. You probably have been seeing those around town. And the fabrication of those signs has begun and those should be installed within three to four weeks. The RFP for the redesign of our city and natural gas websites has been released and submissions are due on Monday at noon. And we have received a tremendous amount of responses from companies throughout the country interested in doing that for us. The Lawrence Capital Project Sales Tax, which is going to have a referendum in November. Our road and traffic improvements to exit 22 that we gave them as a potential project will be listed as number five out of 16 projects on that referendum, which is, which is good. They are planning on bonding that money out if it was to pass. But if not, the projects will be funded in the order of the referendum. And so I'm pretty confident that even if revenues for that decline, being project number five out of 16 shows that we will still likely get that accomplished. Our Safety Committee is going to be hosting a virtual lunch and learn on anger management on July 8th. And then all of you should have at your, at your table, a new ID card that our Safety Committee has provided you. They purchased an ID maker and they're in the process of making one of those for all of our city employees. The Greenville Area Development Corporation is holding a virtual annual meeting this coming Tuesday, June 16th at 10:00 a.m. I sent that link out for registration. They are going to be making a new announcement for economic development in the county and that announcement is actually going to be the Fox Hill Business Park, which is the industrial park on 418 here in Fountain Inn. As far as human resources go, we are still on schedule for our conversion to ADP for our payroll for the first pay period in July. And have an update on Ms. Rebecca Ward. She will be moving into her house in Fountain Inn on June 19th. So that is a week from tomorrow. She has been actively working with us on the ADP conversion. So we've actually already put her to work in some capacity. And then lastly, I want to talk about, as far as just some general information, is that we have a unity event planned for June 27th at 12:00 p.m. at the Activity Center. This is going to involve a community prayer and a panel discussion. And we will be sending more information out to city council staff and the community in the coming weeks.
What was the timing?
At the moment, it is at noon on June 27th, which is a Saturday.
What's the discussion?
The panel discussion is going to cover some broad topics. Probably just the most general one will just be racial tensions and racial relations here in the community. And the driving factor is to hopefully open up a dialogue between our citizens, city and staff, our elected officials, and hopefully have some tough discussions and then hopefully come away with it with some actionable items. And hopefully can continue doing those things on an ongoing basis. Our farmer's market is open every Saturday morning, 8:00 a.m. to noon until September 12th in Commerce Park. It was food and produce for the first three weeks, but we are back to all vendors as of last Saturday. We currently have a total of 30 vendors participating. The Sounds of Summer is our Friday night music series and it is continuing every Friday evening until September 4th. We also have planned our Jeff Lynch Bike Night Wingfest and that is going to be held on September 11th at 6:00 p.m. on Main Street. And we will talk about our Fourth of July celebration a little later on in the meeting. Police Department is fully staffed and everyone's certified. You just met Ava. She is finishing up her field training program. Our Citizens Review Committee will be meeting on June 16th to review use of force incidents and officer complaints. They haven't met in several months due to COVID. They are beginning the state accreditation process in July. And once they start that, we will have a three-year window for completion. The roof replacement over at the Police Department is nearly complete. They have a few minor things that I think they finished up today. All of our park facilities, except the Activity Center, have been back open to the public since May 18th. Baseball, softball practices and games have begun for an abbreviated season. Our Summer Volley Mania starts next week. This is ages K-5 to ninth grade. It runs from the 15th through July 20th with the week of Fourth of July off. The cost is $50. It includes a T-shirt. And as of today, we had 60 registrants, which is 30 more than last year. So it's, it's been very popular. The Activity Center is reopening on Monday for senior adults only from 7:00 a.m. to noon. It'll be closed to the public from noon to 1:00 for cleaning and sanitizing. Then it will be open only for the volleyball programming from 1:00 to 3:30 p.m. Exercise classes are going to resume on June 22nd following that same schedule. No seniors or senior programming will be allowed after noon. And our upgrades and renovations begin on June 28th and are expected to be complete towards the end of September. Manual sold and sports complex, parking lot lights have been installed. The security camera system and smart locks for the restrooms have been installed. And the sidewalk along Woodside Avenue to McDonald's is progressing. We've had some, some rain delays, but working on getting that completed soon. And we have our ribbon cutting and dedication ceremony scheduled for July 3rd at the mall. We're still waiting to receive a schedule. Glen Panagakis Asphalt Paving will return to finish over at the court. Can't wait to get that over with. And then July 14th is the first court date scheduled since the virus outbreak closed our courts in South Carolina. We have not received any guidelines from court administration on safety protocols or restrictions on number of people allowed in the building. In the Public Works Department, we have one vacant CDL driver position. We left 332 notices for solid waste violations in the month of May, such as broken container, container not placed correctly, prohibited materials in the container. All of the May cleanup items as of this week were picked up citywide. They're still working on yard debris and brush. Did want to mention that we have ordered vinyl stickers to place on all of the trash containers. Those came in a day or two ago and I think those are scheduled to be placed on all of the containers, I think tomorrow or next week. Okay, awesome. And I think Mayor McClure is even going out and helping put in some of those stickers on cans. And then also, we have contacted SCDOT about those limbs on Woodland Drive. And they're, they're going to tackle what they can, but they cannot trim any of the ones that are near the power lines. We have contacted Duke Energy and we are hoping that they will do that. In Fire Department, we do have one firefighter out on paternity leave. And that does remind me that Russell Holtoanger is also, has been out this week. They had the birth of a baby boy on Monday and I believe baby and mom are doing well. They removed, Fire Department removed the mulch and railroad ties and replaced with sod over at Headquarters. And our fire station number three discussions are underway with Greenville County School District and potential design and engineering partners. And the Chamber of Commerce has scheduled their annual banquet for August 13th.
And Mr. Ward looking at the fire roof, correct?
Yes. We have contacted somebody about seeing what we can do either on a temporary basis or going ahead and getting that roof started. We have budgeted funds in the proposed budget for second reading tonight for a coating of the fire station headquarters roof and for fire station two. I think the coating is going to work for fire station two, but it is, I think probably a full roof replacement is going to be necessary for at least part of the headquarters roof. It's in really bad shape. They had a tremendous amount of rain coming into the building this week. So I think we're going to have to address that almost on an emergency basis here.
Pretty bad. I do want to thank Mr. Cunningham, Ms. Kelly, Naomi and Chief Hamilton for being a part of it. And Mac, I know you couldn't be there, but appreciate the time and for planning the unity event and working on that. We'll have full details once we get everything buttoned up. Any questions or comments for Mr. Bell, Mr. Cunningham?
Yes, can we just go back to the paving of the municipal court? Is there a deadline, a date that they're saying they may get to that? Because I keep hearing rain delay, rain delay, rain delay. But they just paved Howard's Pharmacy. They just paved a new restaurant, but it seems like we can't get to them.
So I think that they are extremely busy. I think getting them on the schedule has been, has been difficult. They were set to do it quite a long time ago, but then that's when we ran into the issue of it being unsuitable soils and had to wait for that to dry out. And then they finally paved part of it and then we're just now trying to get them on the schedule.
When you see them completing work everywhere else, you're like, we need to get there.
Yeah, yeah.
I don't get it.
Luckily, we haven't had to have a court, I guess, but if we had, it would have been even worse. Anyone else? Mr. Bell? All right, here are none. We'll move on to the agenda. First is unfinished business. Second reading on Annexation 2020 that 004 Jenkins Bridge Road. Had resumed to R12 and signed to Ward 5. Unless there's opposition, I know we, there's some other things we need to discuss for that impact this project, this decision. I think it's kind of been made aware of that. If it's okay, I'd like to kind of skip over it. We don't need to table it officially. We can skip over it and revisit it another day. Is there any opposition to that? Is that right, Mr. Holmes? Okay. Make sure I did that proceeding right. All right, we're going to move on to IVB, second reading of fiscal 21 budget. Mr. Bell and Ms. Reed?
Thank you, Mayor. I will just go over a few of our highlights again for our fiscal year 2020, 2021 budget. This is a balanced budget. There is no proposed millage increase. We are keeping that the same at 76.1 mills. There are no substantive fee increases. There was a slight revision to the fee schedule that we sent to you later today. And one of the, one of the fees was inadvertently left off. As far as personnel goes, this budget gives a 3% cost of living increase for all personnel on the first full pay period in July. In the general fund, just the cost of the salary increase alone is just over $175,000. Total cost of those adjustments, which is the salaries and burden, is just over $255,000. Across all funds and departments, the total cost of the salary adjustments is just over $555,000. Last year, our total personnel costs were $614,000. So in two budget years, the city will increase its total personnel cost by just over $1.1 million. I know Councilmember Thomason had asked about fully implementing Phase Two of the classing comp study and we had Ms. Reed go over some, some analysis of that and she'd be happy to talk about that at this time. Please.
I want to pass out a, this will be seen by some of you for the second time, but some of the newer council members. This is a summary of our comp class survey that we completed in the last fiscal year. And the portion that I tagged is discussing Phase Two and what we were trying to accomplish to line up to these recommendations made by the Archie Company. Prior to, prior to the virus, Sean asked me to look at salaries and come up with some options to increase the salaries for our tenured employees. So I developed some formulas and tried to narrow down some scenarios. So option one was to increase employee salaries for five years, minimum service, and then place everyone else somewhere between the midpoint and the maximum salary incrementally. And so that total cost was $1.2 million and it will affect 96 employees if we were to do that. Option two was to increase employees with a six-year service or more and place them somewhere between the midpoint and 116% of the range maximum. And then no acceleration for employees with less than two years of service. That total, $867,000 and it will affect 83 employees. Then I looked at employees with 10 years of service or more, going straight to the midpoint with incremental placement for additional years of service for everybody else to a maximum of 116% of the total range. And then no acceleration for employees with a minimum of six years, who have a minimum of six years of service or less. That total was $491,000 and would affect 52 employees. So another one, just another scenario I ran was option four, which is the same as option two, which was the six-year service, but limiting the increases to $7,500 instead of the center of double-digit thousand. So that was $445,000 and would affect eight employees. Obviously, well, that only includes salaries, no benefits, the payroll taxes, that's salaries alone. So obviously with the last year's increase of over $600,000 citywide, we were unable to fund any of these options. So discussed that with Sean. He came up with another scenario, which I don't have that total dollar amount, but it was somewhere around the $440,000 mark for salaries alone. Rather than waiting and doing nothing, we decided to do the 3% increase, which was the $555,000, which included the burden, so that we don't fall behind, continue to increase and then give our HR director a chance to help us come up with some of those scenarios to meet the guidelines in the Phase Two. So that is the different scenarios we ran and all the options. If anyone has any questions? And actually, we can provide the full for everyone who may not have gotten Exhibit 10. It details it in about 11 pages, what phase, what all the phases look like and all the salary and benefit recommendations.
I'm sure Rebecca's going to bring a lot of value to this process.
Yes. She's been very helpful so far.
Thank you, Ms. Reed.
Thank you, Ms. Reed. So obviously, I mean, we're talking big numbers and in the past few years, we have been taking some major strides. For capital projects in the general fund, we're using just over 438,000 of fund balance, but for capital non-recurring expenses such as wayfinding Phase Two, masked arms for Maine and Quillan, new city website, door replacement at the Activity Center, placement of two treadmills at the Activity Center, our annual computer replacement schedule, public safety equipment such as two additional police vehicles in addition to a vehicle for the new detective position. I did forget to mention that we have four new positions in this budget proposed. A planning and development director, an assistant public works director, a crew worker in public works and a detective. Also in public safety equipment are 50 sections of replacement fire hose, MDT printers and scanners for the police vehicles, roof repair for fire station one and two, and entry upgrades for the Police Department. The natural gas department, they're using, we're using just over $1.2 million of reserves for capital non-recurring items. New service lines, replacement equipment, Fountain Inn High School infrastructure, mainline expansion for new subdivisions, Clinton Newberry Interconnect project and our new web, new natural gas website. In sewer, we're also using reserves for capital non-recurring items. This is the continuation of our sewer rehab, the old Fairview Road project, our, our RIA grant match and some new and replacement equipment, such as a sewer camera, easement machine, concrete grinder and a vehicle replacement. And in the solid waste department, we have a lease payment borrowing for an automated side load garbage truck and a debris or knuckle boom truck. You will be asked to approve on first reading of a lease purchase ordinance tonight to authorize the funding of those. And the hospitality tax, we have $15,000 plus continued free rent for the chamber, $15,000 for the museum, $75,000 for Cultural Arts Foundation. And as mentioned at our last council meeting, Councilmember Thomason had inquired about giving some additional funding to the Chamber of Commerce. What we did was increase the utilities line in our Commerce Park Department by $10,000 and that would be used for council to reimburse the chamber and/or the museum for expenses related to operating the visitor center. With that, I'd be happy to answer any questions. I'm sure Ms. Reed would as well.
First, we need a motion to approve on second and final read the 2020 fiscal 2021 budget. Is there a motion? Thank you, Mr. Thomas. Is there a second?
Second.
Thank you, Mr. Black. Got any just question or questions or comments?
What are the door upgrades and the fitting?
The key entry, keypad entry.
It's going to be all new replaced?
New keypad entries and then the one at the rear door, take the touch, touch cable.
We're trying to get also with the, in the lobby where dispatch will have a, it's like a hot pad or a pad. And because we, we've eliminated opening up the window for safety. Most of them, dispatch by themselves in the middle of the night in there. So now they'll be able to see and communicate with someone to come to the lobby. That's, that's what we want to do.
Good. Like, I have a question.
Just kind of yet.
Okay. If a business need assistance with, with sewer lining or anything, does the city have funds to help that business with that?
I don't believe we have a, like a line item for stuff like that. It comes as a request and then we have to work on the backend after. Kind of like what we did the last two weeks, we've approved a budget amendment to change, essentially change the budget retroactively to reflect. So I don't think there's a standing line item for that, but it's a decision council can always make and then later on adjust the budget. So that's sort of how that process would work. Is that correct, Mr. Black? Okay. Anything else? All right, not hearing anything. We have a motion and a second. All in favor of approval of the fifth? All in favor of approval of the fiscal twenty twenty-one budget, uh, on second and reading, final reading, please say aye.
Aye.
Is opposed? The ayes have it. I want to thank Ms. Reed, your staff and Sean and all the department heads, uh, and also council. I know we've had a lot of meetings on the budget, so thank you all for your hard work and I think this budget positions us well for the, for the next year. Thank you so much. Moving on to new business, we've got, uh, ordinance twenty twenty dash zero zero four acquisition and financing of motor vehicles and related equipment to be used for public sanitation. Mr. Bell?
Thank you, Mayor. This is ordinance twenty twenty dash zero zero four, providing for the acquisition and financing of motor vehicles and related equipment to be used for public sanitation and authorizing the city administrator to prescribe the form and details of the lease purchase financing of the vehicles and equipment, providing for the payment of the lease purchase financing and other related matters. This is an ordinance that would authorize the city to use, uh, bond counsel and financial advisors to borrow an amount not to exceed, uh, four hundred and seventy-five thousand dollars. And this is for the purchase of the automated side load garbage truck and the, uh, debris or knuckle boom truck. Lease purchase is where we would put out an RFP to banks, uh, for the financing over five years of, uh, of this equipment. And so the, the RFP, we basically ask for, uh, the, the, the interest rate. And so we will end up choosing, uh, the bank that provides us best terms, interest rate being the main one, but there, there are a few other factors as well. And this does have to be done by ordinance.
Uh, is there a motion to approve on first reading, uh, ordinance twenty twenty dash zero zero four?
Go.
Thank you, Mr. Thompson. Is there a second?
Second.
Thank you, Ms. Dear Barry. Any comments or questions? I have one, Ms. Bell. Oh, go ahead, Ms. Dear Barry.
No, you go.
We're adding, uh, an automatic truck, armed side load, uh, trash truck and a debris truck. Is there any concern for fill, do we have the positions to fill those as well?
Yeah, so a- as we continue to move towards, uh, more of those automated pieces of, of equipment, it actually requires less personnel. Our current, uh, garbage fleet has one automated side load truck that was purchased this fiscal year. Uh, and we have two or three rear load, uh, garbage trucks, which those require, uh, one driver and at least one, but usually two people on the back. These can be, uh, pick, just one driver can use the automated side load truck. Um, and then the, uh, the debris truck has been, uh, great for, for us this year. Um, but we still cannot pick the entire city up with just that one. So we're having to use a, uh, dump truck and a lot of other heavy machinery, which requires more personnel. So with two debris trucks, we should be able to pick up the vast majority of all of our debris throughout the city.
Thank you. Ms. Dear Barry?
Um, that's kind of what I wanted to add, so, and that's why I said go first.
Uh, I guess the only other piece of that is how, how quickly do these usually turn around, uh, for us to actually acquire?
So we have already, uh, issued a, uh, a notice to the company that has one already and it is waiting for us. Um, I believe that's for the automated side load truck and now the debris truck, I think we have to order and that's anticipated to be here in the fall. Sean, we just got lucky with the, uh, one already being available.
Look, the automatic side load, I call everybody's remembrance to the demonstration out here. Has that been taken care of?
The squeak, the?
But the, the reason that it would not work on some of the cans, some of the older cans.
Sure, uh, we did, uh, increase our line item this year for replacement trash cans. And so the, the idea is for the city to, especially when we have, have messed up, uh, a garbage container, to, no fault of the citizen, we're, we're gonna replace that. Um, but the hope is to eventually get all of those trash containers that were the lid completely removes to get those replaced.
Well, there's some that, that are on, that are hinged and I've got one of them. When you dump it, it fits, it fits over the, um, the latch and it won't come up. So, and there's a lot of those out.
Oh, yes. One of the, go ahead, sorry. One of the things that I've been helping, talking to public works about and helping them do this is working on communicating a little bit better some, some of the, like, we've gotten new notices for the trash cans, new stickers that hopefully will, they should, they should last for quite a while and won't fade so quickly. And, and kind of some more regular PSAs about how to do, how, how, why things are the way they are. Uh, but yeah, we increased the budget item too, so.
Cause that's annoying to me. I can't put latch on garbage can cause it's been squished. I have to pop it off the back. So, I mean, a new garbage can.
Is it all green?
It is, it's green and, you know, my son with autism, I have to tell him, no, it says, cause he's following the arrows. And so he's reading what this says on the trash can. This day, he goes to the street and I have to say, yes, that's what it says, but I need you to do it this way.
Well, tomorrow, hopefully I think Project Trash here, I think we'll have, hopefully have new stickers on.
Hey, I think he's got it now. It was just the first couple of times, email.
Yeah.
He was following the rules of the trash can.
So that's still gonna be a cost to the individual who would, to get the proper kind of can, is that right?
From what I understand, uh, that is the, the arrangement that the city of Fountainhead has always had where the, the customer purchase, purchases that container. Um, I would say that that's throughout the state, that's not the norm. Um, but that is a tremendous cost, uh, capital cost to be, to provide every customer, uh, with a brand new trash can. That is something that, that we can certainly look at and try to figure out how many need to be replaced. But we're, we're looking probably in the half a million dollar range if, uh, the city was to purchase brand new trash containers and distribute those.
If you sell them at cost?
Correct, we, we make no money on it if they're, if they're sold at cost.
So the offset of going to this new system with a new truck is going to offset that, not to, um, inhibit a lot of that.
Yeah, so I would say, you know, with, with the growth in, in, in residences, um, and with the unreliability, uh, of the inmates, we're at a point, if we, if we continue with rear load, uh, garbage trucks, uh, the, the amount of additional personnel, I think over time would actually be more than replacement of garbage containers. Um, and I also think that there's a tremendous safety, uh, benefit in using the automated side load.
I don't disavow that at all. It's just the fact that people have functioning trash cans now and they're gonna have to replace them with a new kind that's compatible with the new system. And it's gonna be about a hundred bucks, I think. Is that right?
We, we sell about eighty.
It's eighty.
So we can, we can certainly, um...
Do we know how many of those old green trash, I'm looking at two right here, but I know.
So it's only since I've been here that we have been, uh, tracking serial numbers and keeping a spreadsheet and, and that sort of thing. So, so I would say we can estimate, but no, we do not have an exact count or know exactly who all has older cans.
I've got a motion and a second, uh, to approve on first reading. Let's come up again, acquisition and financing of two vehicles for sanitation, a debris truck and a automatic side loader already on the floor. Uh, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? The ayes have it. Uh, item B, annexation twenty twenty to zero zero five Green Pond Road, assigned to I one industrial and assigned to Ward five, Mr. Bell?
Thank you. This is an ordinance to provide for the annexation of property of approximately one point four two acres near Green Pond Road into the sea limits of Fountainhead. And it would zone, uh, this parcel I one industrial and assign the parcel to council Ward five. Planning commission voted unanimously six to zero in favor of the annexation at our planning commission meeting at, uh, on June second. Uh, we had recently annexed an adjacent parcel, uh, back on March ninth, uh, on two oh nine. Basically, this is just, uh, additional acreage for the Fox Hill Business Industrial Park. So we're talking about that piece right there.
Triangles?
Yes.
All right, uh, is there a motion to approve on first reading, annexation twenty twenty to zero zero five Green Pond Road, uh, zone to I one?
I'll make that motion.
Thank you, Mr. Clemmer. Is there a second?
Second.
Thank you, Mr. Cunningham. Any discussion? Okay, hearing none, all those in favor on first reading, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? The ayes have it. Item C for Greenville County's multi-jurisdictional hazard mitigation plan.
Thank you, Mayor. Uh, the Disaster Mitigation Act of two thousand requires communities develop a hazard mitigation plan to be eligible for certain federal disaster mitigation grants and funds. Uh, these plans are used to obtain points under the community rating system for flood plain management or by reducing annual flood insurance premiums. Greenville, or most counties, uh, do this on behalf of the municipalities. Greenville County completed its first hazard mitigation plan in January two thousand and five. And as required, uh, they have to update that plan every five years, including this revision. Uh, since two thousand and ten, uh, this plan is included. Cities of Fountainhead, Greenville, Travelers Rest, Malden and Simpsonville, making it a multi-jurisdictional plan. There was a, a planning effort, uh, they had a disaster mitigation committee, which was comprised of local jurisdictions, emergency management related agencies, disaster mitigation subject matter experts and community stakeholders. There were a few, uh, minor revisions and updates, uh, specifically on mitigation goals, natural hazards, risk assessment and mitigation measures. This plan has been approved by FEMA pending the adoption of re- by resolution of the plan by all of the participating municipalities.
Is there a motion to approve, uh, Greenville County's multi-jurisdictional hazard mitigation plan?
So moved.
Thank you, Mr. Cunningham. Is there a second?
Second.
Thank you, Mr. Black. Any discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor of adoption, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? The ayes have it. On item D, Fourth of July celebration, Mr. Bell?
Thank you, Mayor. As, as mentioned previously, uh, the city had planned on having our, uh, annual Fourth of July celebration, uh, s- upcoming. And it actually is on, uh, the Fourth of July, which is a Saturday, which would include a festival and our, and our fireworks. Uh, we were actually still planning on, on doing this, uh, even amongst COVID. Um, staff has met and we have some reservations about, uh, about having it with all of the municipalities such as, uh, Simpsonville and Spartanburg and, and others canceling their fireworks displays. Last year was an incredible turnout at our Fourth of July celebration. And we're, we are concerned that if we're one of the only municipalities in the area to host a Fourth of July celebration, that the, the crowd may just be too big for what we can handle. Um, originally staff had, uh, had met and talked about just canceling kind of the festival por- portion of that. We're abandoned and, uh, all those things would not be there and just doing a fireworks display. Uh, and, and talking to Chief Hamilton, I think he's still, uh, pretty concerned about even just having a fireworks display. I think the majority of staff would support council, uh, canceling this Fourth of July celebration this year. Uh, but that is obviously a council decision. Um, as far as the, uh, the monetary amount, we, our fireworks display, uh, was eleven thousand dollars and we've already paid, uh, fifty-five hundred of that as a deposit. If we cancel it or were to move it, um, eh, if we do anything other than having it on the Fourth of July, uh, we will be out forty percent, which is forty-four hundred dollars. So those are some of the considerations that I think need to be made. If we were to, to have it, let's say, uh, at our Bike Night Wing Fest, which happens to be on September eleventh, um, it is still a minimum of an eleven thousand dollar, uh, show. You, you can't do less than that from that vendor that we've been currently using.
And we don't get a credit for?
We do not.
And I, I asked if we could even hold that until next year and they said no. So if we do nothing, we're out forty-four hundred.
All right, so, so this is kind of an open for discussion. There's not really a motion on the table or anything, so does anyone have something?
Well, with, with, uh, COVID nineteen has went up since last week, I think we would be canceled. This is my opinion. Go ahead, council. If we lose the money, that's fine, but the lives are more important than the money.
I agree.
The only question is, we cancel that or we're gonna have the park dedication on the third? We got the community event over in the rec center on June, June twenty-seventh and then we're having sounds of music every Friday night. I mean, one person versus ten thousand people, uh, one person can have that experience ready.
So the July third, we, we'd probably, we would have, need to talk to Mr. Sullivan. Um, but that was planned on July third as part of kind of a Fourth of July weekend. So if this was canceled, we would probably reschedule that. I agree on the, uh, on the sounds of summer, I would say that that crowd number appears to be much more manageable. Uh, then.
It's gonna grow as it goes.
But, but if you make a stimulation to say that, if you're gonna attend it without masks, if you just don't come out unmasked and therefore those who perform and would have to perform with a mask on or stay at social distances. So therefore, if I decide to attend and if I show up and I don't have a mask on, well, you're not allowed to come in because of the fact we deal with COVID nineteen. Because like if you're in Virginia now, I have to be, because of the COVID went up earlier, we have to come in early and not to be, everybody gotta be tested and guarded. That's why I came in with this mask on, cause when I leave here, I gotta be tested. So therefore, to be the safety of others, even though I'm saying, well, I'm fine and I trust everybody is fine, but I still have to be tested early, that's why.
There have a lot, there have been a lot of municipalities that have canceled their summer events. I think, uh, Mayor McQuarrie mentioned that Malden canceled their beach and, uh, series.
Virginia.
They're just Virginia.
So, I mean, that would be another thing that I think for council to consider.
And even with the, uh, I'm pretty sure that if, with the COVID nineteen still in place, that the Emmanuel Sullivan's, uh, complex, they can always be moved to a, a later date, like we did from April, we moved it to July. It can always be moved, so there's not, uh, nothing that we can say is fine.
But you know, we're out to the park that night. There's T-ball, well, it was nobody says ridiculous. There's no mask. So.
That's why we went party.
So I'm just saying, I mean, I don't know if we should cancel or not. And I think you're gonna cut down the number of people coming just because of COVID. Something tomorrow will come out. You got something with it or you got, well, it was forty-four hundred dollars. I will play the majority of the rules, but, uh, we've got several other things going on. Are we gonna, the amount of, the way it brought up and let people come and do it? How, there's some way to do that.
I've got some, I think this line one and this.
I think our concern from the special event side, take, if you just take the COVID out of it, because everyone else is closed, the number of people here are not, are gonna be so big, it's gonna be hard for two of us to manage. And there's, Fourth of July is very hard to get anyone to help us, volunteer or because it's a holiday. And so just with everyone else closing, I think it was more for us, the fact of how huge the crowd is gonna be.
Yeah.
Whether there was COVID in play or not. It was, I think it's gonna be bigger than she and I can manage.
I'll disagree with that.
You know, the sounds of summer is not merely the amount of people that I think.
Maximum, I think, on average, sounds of summer is maybe still under like two hundred, maybe or two fifty. May spite. I don't like, Malden's point of view, I think bears gets about a thousand every, every try. So that's kind of a different animal. The park, obviously, is another piece on that, so I, I don't disagree with both, both.
It's not an easy decision, which is why I, uh, ask council to, to weigh in.
Uh, if I, if I, if it was just me, one of my pre- my preference might be to do the fireworks but not the festival with no, and one reason being, I think our businesses might still get some good appreciation out of that. with no, and one reason being, I think, our businesses might still get some good appreciation out of that, having something, um, but I, I get the concern of, like, they're gonna come here anyway, uh, if there's, people are gonna come here, if it's, if it's.
You either do it all or do nothing.
Yeah, yeah, and, and I, I do want us to be a community that kind of, yeah, yeah. I don't know if they, does anyone want to make a motion? Oh, do we want a motion, or do you just want us to?
I think, I think staff would prefer some, some official direction.
Right, I know, I, I meant like a vote or something, okay. Is there anyone that wants to make a motion?
I'll make a motion.
Go ahead.
Then we still move the, that the fireworks show will be canceled if you do the COVID nineteen.
Thank you, Mr. Cunningham, is there a second?
Second.
Thank you, Mr. Maroney, any other discussion or anything? Yep.
Sorry. So, not move them to, not add them to September, just leave the money canceled. No, if we move them to September eleventh, we just pay the same amount that we were gonna pay for Fourth of July, that wasn't said.
Yeah, that would be the same, that's what you're saying, hey?
Yeah.
So I'd say we lost the money.
If we cancel, period, we lose forty-four hundred dollars, we have no fireworks show. If we move it to another date.
We get the credit.
We get the credit, and it would be the original amount of money we're paying.
We owe seven thousand.
We would still owe them more, but, so my suggestion or thought, our thought was maybe add it, September eleventh is the win night, and maybe we just don't advertise that there's gonna be fireworks.
I, I guess, and I'm still a little confused on the way that, the way you're describing that monetary amount.
I would, so I would, I, I think the motion you made, Mr. Cunningham, and I was seconded, I think we can still vote on. And if you, if you wanna explore that option, I think that can be a staff level decision on what, I, we don't need to give the weight on and tell it exactly what.
Cause we still, we have accountable, correct? Even if we hold that spot, and then we cancel, and then we still, we have accountable. So what she's telling me that if we cancel for July, that's fine, but if you hold that spot to September, and we come up and we still in the same situation, we gotta pay the extra money.
We don't have to pay the extra, we're still just.
We just, okay.
Same amount.
All right, okay.
So we, okay.
We're out the forty-four hundred no matter what, right? Okay.
Yeah, but we're either out forty-four hundred or we're out eleven.
Yes.
Gotcha.
With eleven, we're on eleven, we get all the show.
Right.
Right, okay.
Yeah, so I, I think your motion's fine, yeah, I think we can leave your motion, cause all it, all it was was July fourth.
Okay.
And then we'll let staff, we'll get September, and they'll, they'll do their thing, right, they do so.
Okay.
All right, so there's a motion and a second.
Second.
Oh, yeah, so we're good, okay. Any other questions or comments? All right, so this is a motion to cancel the fireworks show on July fourth, and we'll let staff work on some. Yes, all those in favor, say aye.
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 Any opposed? The ayes have it. All right. Next item, item B, Rebecca Hand, I report Rebecca Hand as Chief Municipal Judge.
Mayor, we have had a, uh, vacancy in our chief municipal judge position for, for the last several months. We have not been able to hold, uh, trials at our municipal court for months, uh, due to COVID nineteen, so this has not become an issue, but with court set to resume on July fourteenth, uh, it's imperative that the city, uh, get a chief municipal judge, uh, in place. Uh, this judge primarily just does our, uh, our bench trials and our jury trials. Judge Finley still handles the, uh, the day-to-day operations over there, and we also have two night and weekend judges, uh, that handle a lot of our, uh, warrants and, uh, bond hearings, things like that. Rebecca Hand, uh, was, uh, made aware of, uh, we were made aware of, uh, her interests, and, uh, Ms. Finley reached out to her, we met with her yesterday. She is currently, uh, the chief municipal judge for the city of Travelers Rest, so she already currently is certified, she understands how municipal court, uh, works and, and operates, and she is interested in, in doing this, uh, in addition to, uh, her work in Travelers Rest. They currently have a, a different day of the, of the week they schedule their trials, so there should, uh, be very few conflicts and issues there.
Is there a motion to appoint Rebecca Hand as Chief Municipal Judge?
Some.
Thank you, Mr. Cunningham, any second?
Second.
Thank you, Mr. Clemmer, any discussion?
Mr. Collins, do you know this, uh?
I do not. And she would start pretty much immediately, correct, if I remember reading?
Yes.
Anything else?
Judge Finley, have you met with her?
I have, I think she did a great bit. Yeah, we got all the certifications and everything, so, that's the big plus part of it.
All right, all those in favor, appoint Rebecca Hand as Chief Municipal Judge, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? The ayes have it. We need a motion to go into executive session for, well, before I did, I just wanted to say to, uh, this, uh, cause I don't know, this is a term, uh, Mr. Holmes, your, your life service is on our thoughts and prayers for next week.
Yes.
Uh, we need a motion to go into executive session for the discussion of employment appointments, compensation, promotion, promotion, at this point of release, employee in the administration department, with a receipt of legal advice concerning potential acquisition right away, and also a development agreement concerning property looking at Greenville County tax method, zero five six, twenty ten, one, zero zero three, zero two. Is there such a motion?
So moved.
Thank you, Mr. Clemmer, is there a second?
Second.
Thank you, thank you, Mr. Cunningham, we'll hear that one. All those in favor appointing executive session, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? The ayes have it, we're now in the executive session. Oh, yeah.
No, no, we want you in first.